I say it's more accurate than our computer time.
We're ready, okay. All right, we are live. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council regular session agenda for Tuesday, January twentieth. No, ten, January tenth here in the council chambers. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Tina Woodworth to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. She'll pay me back for that later. All right, well, welcome everybody who is here in the council chambers and welcome to those of you who are watching online. Or streaming it live, we're happy that you're participating in local governments. Tonight, after calling the meeting to order and the pledge of allegiance, our next. Item of business is we have some ceremonial items, so I believe we will begin with the.
First up will be the Rotary presentation and this is the $10,000 donation to the fire department.
Fantastic, okay, all right, so we'll have the police chief. I knew that, I told you, man, this is, this is coming out here.
My name is Steve Schneider and I'm from the Rotary Coops Foundation, which is the charitable arm of the Coop Bay Northern Rotary Club. And we were excited to receive a grant request from North Bend Fire and through Lieutenant Sero and Lieutenant Cooper and Chief Brown and. Our grant program through Rotary is a maximum of $10,000 and we're pleased to award $10,000 to the North Bend Fire Department. For a new high-tech battery-operated job life system that is going to definitely save some lives.
And you can find me at the next meeting or not where my road is.
Anybody else from the council want to join in? Okay, let's make sure we can see each other. I can see Larry even.
You don't have to squeeze in.
There you go, right, right?
All right, we got, I gotta thank Steve for this too, another thing that some people don't want to tell you. He was a volunteer with Biffy Fire for a little bit. Many years, Steve led the Oregon Volunteers Association, I believe, for the state of Oregon for how many, two years, two years? He has a background in fire, so. When this came to the committee of the Rotary, Steve knew what he was talking about. I want to thank you for that because I hope we never have to do it. Right, but you know, like we talked.
But we will have to use it.
Just for the council, we've had to use their call live since November, I've had to pick them up twice, and then John's used it once. You know, twice, yeah, so four times.
Well, I, I think Counselor Goll remember a lot of years ago when he had plugged the old heavy equipment over a rock slide.
I, I remember about the North Bend's first. Jaws of Life call I was on, it was a assist to North Bay Fire and. Thinking that you're helping us get something that's battery-operated compared to carrying the pump, carrying the. And we were down over an embankment and. It was work, you know, and you know, and your adrenaline's going, now you got, you know, battery-operated stuff that's a lot easier to handle and probably more efficient, so. We sure thank everybody, the, the fire department, the volunteers, everybody that put something together along with you to get this thing, so. That's very neat.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
So your next agenda item will be a presentation by Chief McCullough and the Police Department.
Okay.
Let him just take it from the top. Thank you, Matt Mayor and council members, but tonight I'd just like to take a moment to recognize. Four ladies that are unfortunately no longer employees with the city of North Bend, but prior to them. Having to leave, they were the. The, the.
Glue.
The glue, the machine that kept North Bend Police and Fire running through the dispatch center. These four, four ladies that were left, I got two of them here tonight, I was hoping to have three, but. One of them has retired and moved to Texas, so, so her, her presentation was bailed over, but I got Macy, Jenick and Holly Boris with us tonight. And between those four ladies, the amount of overtime that they had to work to keep the dispatch center open and operational to make sure that. Police personnel and fire personnel, EMS personnel were dispatched. To the calls, they made sure that we were safe, checked upon us all the time, so it's very much appreciative. I've been trying to put all this stuff together, took me about a year. Then, you know, trying to order stuff and get stuff brought in and whatnot, but we were finally able to get some shadow boxes put together. Chief Brown, you want to come up? And.
Got one here, can you come up, Paulie?
Shadow boxes that are put together for them that represent both police and fire. Yeah, as well as, I got, this was the one that took so long, these little dispatch badges and. But this one's for Holly Boris and it's the recognition of seven years of exemplary service. Your loyal dedicated service to the citizens of North Bend, the North Bend Police and Fire Departments is sincerely appreciated. And again, I wanted to thank you so very much for your hard work.
Yes.
And then I've got one for Macy. Macy, and basically, we all know Macy, she's a, you know, we're just wonderful, hardworking individual, and. This one, when she was a dispatcher, her name was Macy Dibble. But this one is in recognition for two years of ex- exemplary service. Your loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of North Bend, the North Bend Police and Fire Departments is sincerely appreciated.
Oh, that's fantastic.
So very much for your hard work and, and way you're in the dispatch center.
Yeah, great. Perfect.
Fifteen years with the city and the dispatch center as well as Kelly Andrade at fifteen years as well. We'll make sure that they get their, their shadow boxes.
Yes, well, I was gonna ask if they would come back up and take some pictures with the chiefs and maybe the council, we love to document the event, so. One more time, fellas and gals, come on.
Yes, I will. All right, ready? There it is, I'm probably in that. All right, one more.
All right. Okay, well, that was very nice and I'm. Happy to see that we were able to honor those former dispatchers like that, that was very good. All right, let's go ahead and move down the regular agenda here, let's see, that would take us to number three. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
But move to accept the consent calendar as written?
Yes. All right, I heard a first from Counselor Jones and a second from Counselor Garboden, all in favor to accept the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, that takes us to number four, which is public comment this evening, Macy, do we have anybody signed up for public comment? Okay, nobody online, nobody on site, as a reminder, that is always available up till one o'clock on. The day of the meeting, okay, so if anybody wants to do that, information can be found on our website. Number five, okay, Counselor Garboden, are you ready for your motion on this one, this is the award, I see that. So there is, so this was a very heavily. Talked about item in the work session last night and in previous meetings and it's number five's agenda item, which is award of the fiscal year twenty-three state revenue sharing. Community grants, so is there a motion for this agenda item?
I moved to award the following community grant requests for $9,000, $1,500 to the Boys and Girls Club of Southwest Oregon. $500 to the Knights of Columbus Council 1261, $1,500 to Oregon Coast Community Actions, Casa of Coos and Curry Counties. $1,500 to the Nancy Deveraux Center, $1,000 to the Baloney Ranch. $750 to the Safe Project, $500 to Alternative Youth Activities, AYA. $500 to Peg Broadcast, Coos Community Media Center, $500 to Southwest Oregon Veterans Outreach, SOVO. And $750 to Smart Reading and $1,000 to Common Grounds Mediation.
All right, I heard a first from Counselor Gleason.
Second.
Lots of seconds around, first one I heard went down here was Counselor Jones, so we have a first and a second, is there any discussion?
Right, I don't know if I need to bag out of this vote just because I'm on the Peg Broadcasting Board of Directors, but. What do you think?
So, not your attorney, the attorney's on there, but if you believe that you have a potential. Or a real conflict interest, you would disclose that if you would personally benefit from this. In this case, I believe that you would simply state for the record. And you can recuse yourself, but we'll go to Mark who will advise you on the legal ramifications.
Yeah, so Counselor, that would be the, the safest option. If, if the peg is a 501(c)(3). Then it's not technically a business under Oregon's government ethics laws, so it would not be a business to which you are affiliated. But again, the, the safest approach here might be for you to just declare that conflict. And then do not discuss this matter and do not vote on this matter.
That's kind of why I wanted to do that, yeah, I didn't want to make a big deal about it, but yeah.
So we had a first, we had a second, yes.
I'm sorry, could, could we actually get you to, to declare your conflict and just state for the record your position and affiliation with Peg?
Yeah, I thought I did, but yeah, I'd like to, to bag out of this deal because I'm on Board of Directors for Peg Broadcast.
Perfect, thank you.
We have that for the record and we had a first, we have a second, and is there any further discussion? So all in favor of the motion for the following grants, totally $9,500, $1,500 to the Boys and Girls Club, $500 to the Knights of Columbus. Council 1261, $1,500 to Oregon Coast Community Action, Casa of Coos County Curry, $1,500 to the Nancy Deveraux Center, $1,000 to Baloney Ranch, $750 to the. To the Safe Project, 502 AYA, 500 to Peg Broadcasting, 500 to Southwest Oregon Veterans Outreach, SOVO and 750 to Smart Reading and $1,000 to Common. Ground Mediation, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one recused.
So, I'm sure if you'll duly note in the minutes that it was a six oh with one non-voting.
All right.
Sorry, complicated.
No, I think that, you know, when in doubt, it's always better to go for that, stating the conflict.
Best thing to do.
Yes. All right, so that, so that was, we took care of four, we took care of five, we're moving down to number item six, which is the budget calendar, is there a motion for the budget calendar?
I'll take a motion to approve the budget calendar as presented.
Okay, I hear a first from Counselor Garboden, I hear a second from Counselor Goll, is there any discussion? All in, all in favor of approving the budget calendar fiscal year twenty-four as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Number seven on the agenda is the purchase of the rescue tool, now, so this is going to. So we accepted the money from Rotary and as we discussed in the work session last night, this is the item that would be used. This is what, what we would be buying the $10,000 with, so is there a motion for, yes?
I just want to be sure everyone understands that this is really a group effort, this thing purchased as well, I just want to be sure that everyone understands. Our Volunteer Firefighter Association has put in $3,000 in addition to the Rotary's $10,000. And then the city itself is going to pick up the $2,168, I believe, remaining balance, so all three are actively involved in this and have some skin in their game.
Great effort.
We really, really appreciate the Rotary's input in this as well.
All right, thank you, is there a motion per line item number seven of the agenda?
Move to approve purchase of Homomatro for $15,167 from fire rescue equipment Northwest from fire deposit budget zero.
I heard a first from Counselor Gleason and a second from Counselor Goll, is there any discussion? All in favor then to approve the purchase of the. Homomatro? Homatro combo tool for $15,167 from the fire rescue equipment Northwest from the fire department, budget zero nine fourteen seven nine eight nine zero, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, that takes us to number eight, which is the acceptance of the sanitary sewer improvements for Mod Pizza, Starbucks and RVs, got a great presentation. In the work session last night, is there a motion for this line item?
Let's see.
You wanna try that one, Counselor Jones is gonna make a motion. And there, yeah, there should be a suggested motion. Yeah, forty-two has a suggested motion.
I moved to accept the Newmark Ave sanitary sewer improvements from First Street West for city maintenance. Condition on the receipt of record drawings and payment of $2,332.33.
All right, there, first from Counselor Jones, second from Counselor Gleason, is there any discussion? Let's just keep the myth going that as long as they keep flushing the toilets, we get money, right? We don't want them to waste, we don't want them to waste water. I do like the fact that we are somehow being part of other developments in the city, though, I think that's exciting. All right, no further discussion, then all in favor to accept the Newmark Ave sanitary sewer improvements from First Street West for city maintenance. Condition on receipt of record drawings and payment of $2,332.33, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. That took care of our number eight and then nine is any action resulting in executive session. And we did not have any executive sessions that we need to report on, or we just didn't have any executive sessions, so we'll go to number ten, which is the city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, a couple highlights, the city administrator's report is on the website, it's linked to our social media. I consider it our electronic newsletter, it's also been distributed to staff and council by email and the news media. A couple highlights, we've been averaging over 400 people a week at the ice skating rink. We gather data so we know who they are, where they come from, and that will be a good end of season report when we start to. Look at the vitality of tourism. The fiscal year twenty-two audit is in play, we've got an extension through February sixth, allows the audit to be completed by March thirty-first. So that continues to move forward, our firefighters and volunteers scoured the streets of North Bend on Saturday picking up trees. And they also. Not only does it remove hazards from folks' homes, but folks can also contribute to our Secret Santa Fund. And that allows them to provide Christmases for those unfortunate not to be able to do so. And those are referrals that come through the North Bend School District. So always a, a good program, the library's now offering laptops that you can check out, so not only can you get a laptop, you can check out a hotspot as well and you can like. Be up and running in no time. And so, nice little program there, this morning we swore in a new author, Officer Trevor Seany. We'll do a ceremonial swearing in with the council and the mayor at our next meeting, it's a lateral transfer coming to us from the city abandoned. I think we took 25% of their police force this morning. But the Chief Abandon was a good sport and attended the swearing in. In the report is almost an entire page dedicated to the pool, I want you to take a good look at all the activity that's going on. The progress that's being made, our new aquatics director's hit the ground running. She is actually in certification training yesterday, today and tomorrow for aquatic facility operator certification. From there, she'll go to the ARC lifeguarding instructor training, which is needed to certify our lifeguards. And then we've also enrolled her in success for new supervisor series training, I currently have two staff members. Enrolled for that, and this is where department heads and, and folks that are supervising folks can get. Very good solid training, because unfortunately, a lot of times you get promoted and now you're supervisor and. You supervise by what, what you learn, and so this is good training to bring our supervisors along, we've, our. Park superintendent has already successfully completed that, and so this is the next two folks in that. Also, unfortunately, we had to send down an email, it's, you know, we have a great wastewater treatment staff. But unfortunately, sometimes bad things happen and it's out of our control, we did have an elbow on a pump bypass on a project. Break on us and it spilled almost 30,000 gallons of raw sewage into a pony slough. We staff immediately did what they are trained to do and notified all the responsive state federal agencies, put up the signage, did their Liam control. We put out a PSA about it, and as I say, bad news doesn't get better with time. We probably most likely will get fined on this and it's unfortunate, but know that. We take those incidences very seriously and it gives the department and the staff a great time to reflect back. On what happened, how it happened and how to prevent it in the future, so with that said, that concludes my city administrator's report.
All right. Perfect, thank you, did we have any committees reporting out for anything? All right, no committees, so we'll go ahead and move to council comments. Counselor Goll, oh, oh, I see a hand, yes, yeah.
Committee-wise, there will be one, it'll be on your next agenda, now that Bill Richardson is no longer on the council, I was informed today that. The council will need to appoint a new member to the urban renewal agency for the Coos County. We also have council member Pat Galls that expired at the end of January. So that'll be an opportunity to, if he so chooses, re-up that and then we'll send a proffer letter over to acknowledge that. But that'll be action that'll be necessary on the committee side as appointments from the governing body for your next meeting.
All right, perfect, thank you for that update. All right, Counselor Goll.
I'll tail right into my council column. If it works out for the mayor, I'd love to stay on that, I think I have some interest on the, on the north spit and I think it's a. A good spot for me to be, so. Going to the fire department and the police department, you know, we had incident work and required both their services and. Once again, North Bend shine, so I appreciate both of them being, being at our facility to help us out. I'd also like to comment on this, the meeting we attended for the Coos Bay estuary management plan. That's pretty, that's pretty. Pretty important that we do upgrade that plan, I probably have the original plan on my desk at work and that was. A lot of years ago and a lot of things have changed in this, in the bay, you know, I'll call it the bay, they call it the estuary. Management plan, but I'll call it the bay. Anyway, I think it's, I think it's a really good thing that they're, they're gonna focus on updating that plan. I think we were, we showed our, we showed our colors, we were there flying high, so I, I, that was a, a pretty good meeting, I. Little confused on, on the time stuff, but it all worked out and. Coos Bay and North Bend and the county and maybe even the port will be players in this and, and. And I think, I think it's more than overdue for an update, so that's about all I got.
Okay, all right, we'll just work our way down the line there, Counselor Schultz, do you have any council comments, are there things that you want to report out on and things that are happening in your world?
No comment today.
Okay, Counselor Norrod.
I went to the Saturday's presentation of Kebabs, excuse me, out at the North Bend Community Center. And curiously, they, they only really advertised it in the Legals. In the world, so there, there weren't that many people, but it was a really good presentation, our, our city planner was there, Derek Payne. And the staffers from up in the University of Oregon, the, the consultants, so there were a lot of maps. And they had just printed one that particular morning that showed all the tide gates on the bay, so that was pretty interesting, so. I'm, I'm looking forward to learning more about it, it's gonna be a long process.
Okay, Counselor Gleason, you've got your fire department sweatshirt on too.
I did, it wasn't planned.
Oh.
It just, that's how intuitive I am, actually, I, I did wear this because they, they showed up to my house a week ago.
Oh.
I was, I was telling some of the council members at meeting that last Tuesday, the fuse on the power pole outside of our house was arcing off. And the kids were all freaking out because the lights were flickering in the house, we didn't know what's going on, well, I figured it out, so the fire department got to come and play. Sit and watch with me as we waited for Pacific Power, but nothing burned down, they, they, they did awesome, they went and they checked our neighbor's house because it was. Closer to our neighbor's house, wanted to make sure that it walked through with her to make her feel safe, it was really awesome to see the response from the professionalism of the. Team, which it always is, you know, I'm not surprised, but so that's why I wore it, because I felt particularly close to them and you know. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not surprised, but so that's why I wore it because I felt particularly close to them in the last week.
Yeah.
Um, congratulations to Holly Macy. That is awesome. Those are great shadow boxes. Holly and I, another life ago, eleven years ago, were both slinging mail for the postal service. So, uh, it was nice to see, um, her be so successful in, in what the next role for her was. She was, she was really great at delivering mail. I mean, so, um, it's awesome to see that. Congratulations. Those are neat. Those are gonna be awesome for you guys to have. Thank you for putting those together, chief. Those are really thoughtful. I don't have anything in particular.
Okay, all right, we can save it for two more weeks. Counselor Jones.
So I just continue to be so impressed by all of our city leaders and all of our city staff. Such quick responses, full responses. Uh, we had an incident at our home. A rat found its way in the sewer and jumped out of our toilet. And, uh, you know, it's urban legend stuff. Uh, we called the city that night, we called pest control, our, you know, our local things and, um, are on a. Plan, very quickly got responses and. Um, I just really appreciate that and I did the normal channels.
I would say you didn't get any special rat toilet treatment, right?
No, no.
Yeah.
You know, what did I do? I reported a concern via the website and we got a call at eight thirty in the morning from the Community Resource Officer. And a plan in place and, and our local, you know, I just, I am amazed by. The level of collaboration between all of our internals, our agencies, all the people with the small businesses here. It's amazing and I thank you.
Well, I hope my wife ain't watching this movie.
Yeah.
Do you have backflow prevent?
Yeah.
The kids would never use the toilet again.
Yeah, screaming at my pillows and I.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, but I, I thank you. I appreciate the sentiments too that we have every, you know, and especially when you see like the, the years of service that. Um, everybody has and that there's, you know, we find when, you know, opportunities close, but new ones open, there's different positions and. So the length of service always is such a testament. I hear people all the time, there's great places to work all over the state and the county. But there's something about North Bend that's a family and, and you can see it with the different departments, so.
In the best possible way.
In the best possible way of the family, true. Yeah, how you feeling down there, Counselor Garboden?
Feeling fine.
You're healing up there, huh?
We're trying.
All right, anything to report? Nothing to report. Well, I've got a couple of things. Um, I do want to make a comment. We had a citizen come in last night, um, and made public comment. What, that was concerned about feeling that they were not getting some information, so. Um, we, I believe the council received an email today from our city administrator that right away, we put that, um. Uh, that citizen gave us their email address and they, um, was put on the mailing list. So just want to reiterate out there to anybody who's watching or listening that there are multiple ways to get information. And I hope that the council can help me spread that message, whether you're a social media user, uh, whether you go directly to our website. Uh, whether you sign up for, um, just the, the email, um, I guess, what would you call it? Like, is it an email blast? Yeah, e-notification. So is your city, city administrator's report, is that where that's found? That comes out and acts like a city newsletter. So there's, there, if you want to be in the know, we can make you sick of us in the know. Like, that's how much the information is out there. So, um, there's quite a few different social media sites too, if you want to find, the police has. Uh, Facebook page, the fire department has a social media page. I try to post things that are happening on my social media page and Instagram, so there are lots of ways out there. So help us spread the word, um, to, and, and then of course these meetings, a lot of the things that the gentleman had said, like, I didn't hear about that. Every single one of them were in the meetings. Um, so. Um, I appreciate him coming and just giving us another opportunity to report out where you guys can find that information. Um, nice job on the ice skating rink. Guess it's good to, um, let everybody know too that they get to enjoy that all the way up till February, probably fifteenth, a little after Valentine. You know, closing on the eighteen. So, uh, again, if people are watching, stay tuned because I know there's gonna be probably at least maybe one sponsored night where people can go to. Um, so that's gonna be great to go, uh, to continue to participate in that. Um, this morning, um, I had the opportunity to present at Leadership Kooz. And if, um, this is a great program for anybody in the community who's, um, interested in, how many people in this room have been through leadership coup? So the chief, the city administrator, by, listen, Jenny, you did it. Uh, Michael, you've been to leadership coups, haven't you? I'm so sorry, Andrew. Mister Andrew. Yeah, he's gonna be really naughty. Uh, anybody else, uh, that's, so quite a few of us have gone through the Leadership Kooz program at the chamber. And I always call it like, uh, adult field trips is what it is. I grew up in North Bend and I had never been to a cranberry bog. Um, I'm so sorry, Andrew. Um, I, uh, had never been to a cranberry bog until I went to, um, to Leadership Kooz. So, um, check that out. Most employers in the community are really supportive of that as well. And so, um, we were, we talked about things, there were questions. Somebody had, had said, they said, hey, I see things on social media about. How come you can have an ice skating rink, but you can't get the pool open? So we walked through some of that. I'm like, again, it's in the newsletter. It's in, in the things. Um, and then Stephanie Kilmer was there with me representing Kuz Bay and she, um, spoke about like how we are governed. Uh, a lot of people just don't quite understand the city manager form of government, so we walked through that, what the roles of the counselors are. So at a really good time and I like always, you know, partnering with, um, Kuz Bay when we can do some fun things like that together. Um, I was also invited, um, the new governor was sworn in this week, so when she was still considered, uh, governor-elect. Um, the transition team had asked a group from the South Coast, so it was like advanced health. Um, it had several of the mayors, Mayor Benetti, myself, um, Tammy Kaufman from Gold Beach. We had representatives from Kuz Health and Wellness. We had, uh, Chapnar from Kuz Bay was invited. So it was a relatively small group, but the transition team had come to us and said, we have three, you know, really important questions. That we want to ask you and that we're bringing back to the governor's office and it was about the homelessness crisis. So I really appreciated being part of that conversation and they wanted to know, you know, what was working. Um, they wanted to know what, uh, wasn't working and what we needed. And it was good because we were all on the same page where we listed different things that we needed. But was very clear, like, we need support from the state and we need you to look at the way some of these laws are written. Because we are being hamstrung, um, by what's being pushed down to the cities. It's not, you know, people think that we as a council can decide on certain things and, and control it and it's what the law is. And unless we want to have a pile of money ready there to be available in case we get sued on something, there's not a lot that we can do. And we have some really important deadlines coming up in July to put time monitor in place in that this council is gonna have to work through. And so we wanted that message to the governor's office to be heard, that we need money, we need support and we need you them to review the laws. Uh, we also did put in a push, everybody on that call was like, and can you take it, take a look at Shutter Creek one more time? Because that is a huge resource in the community. Um, that, uh, uh, could be used for all sorts of things. And I know that they're looking at potentially, uh, maybe OSU having it be a research center. And we were sort of screaming like, we're in crisis. So this is something that could help. So, um, you know, again, this was just the transition team. I invited that staff and the governor to come have lunch with us all. So we'll see if that can go anywhere, but, um, you know, you guys, it's January ten and we've got July first coming down. So this needs to be something that we are discussing al- almost every other week. So, do you want to add anything that, that Mr. City Administrator? I know we're on the same page, like, we need, we need help, but, um. I won't go on, I'll just.
You rolled right through.
Okay, okay. All right, that, I know we still have some urban renewal agenda items, so if, I don't think there is any other business. Ralph, are you making eye contact with me? Okay. Uh, no other business, so I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting and then we'll roll right into the, uh, urban renewal meeting. So, uh, council meeting adjourned. So. Oh, when? Ms. Macy tells me that we're ready? Okay, okay, so we'll start a new taping for this. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency meeting for Tuesday, January tenth, um, here in the council chambers. After calling the meeting to order, I'd like to, uh, take a look and see if, uh, there is a motion to approve the minutes from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion?
November thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, you are in it.
All right. Uh, I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from December thirteenth, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three on the agenda is fencing by the ice rink on twenty forty Union Avenue. Spoke about this last night in the work session. Is there a motion for the fencing by the ice rink?
So Madam Chair, um, I think the appropriate way is we were waiting for a second quote. It has not arrived. And so what I think best is, uh. To go ahead and, uh, request the URA board to authorize a not to exceed amount.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, in order to give a little wiggle room for contingencies, I'd say a not to exceed for sixteen thousand for fencing. Uh, at twenty forty, uh, Union Avenue. And then that way it allows staff to finish and vet the other bid once it arrives and then make a decision on who's best and representative to do the work.
All right. Is there anybody from the URA board that would like to make that motion?
Okay, I move to accept the staff recommendation to approve West Coast fencing to install fence and body.
We're changing it.
Do it well, not to exceed.
Yes. Oh, okay. Okay, so let's. Counselor Jones, try that, or, uh, committee, uh.
Authorizing expenditure, uh.
Yeah. Board Member Jones, I have to remember what role we're in. Board Member, URA Board Member Jones, let's try that one more time.
Okay, I move to approve the, uh, not to exceed sixteen thousand to fence the ice rink on twenty forty Union.
Okay, I hear, yeah, I heard a first from Counselor Jones and a second from, um, Counselor Gleason. Gleason, was there any discussion? Then all in favor to approve fencing to, um, to, that not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars, um. For the ice skating rink area, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to number four, which is the Executive Director Report.
Couple of things to report out, um, since our last meeting, we've had, um, uh, one business in our URA district that's expanding. Another that's actually relocated to North Bend. Um, obviously, uh, the investments into the Liberty Theater, um, uh, continue to move forward with, uh, the grant project. And also, um, uh, their tiered project list. Um, and, um, proud to say that on, uh, February seventeen. Uh, they'll be considered for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. And so there'll be, um, uh, six properties, um, uh, one here in North Bend, five from elsewhere in the state. That will be considered that day. And so the, uh, team is coming here to North Bend. And so it'll be quite a nice, um, showcase for North Bend and, um, proud moment, uh, uh, to, uh, move forward with that project. Um, and cap off, um, uh, years of support from, uh, the URA board and the city as a whole. And that concludes my executive director's report.
All right, thank you. Okay, and, um, is there anybody signed up for public comment for URA tonight? No public comment, then, um, without any other business, we'll go ahead and adjourn the URA meeting.